SJC 13069, West Street Associates LLC v. Planning Board of the Town of Mansfield.
We have Attorney Timman.
Good morning, Chief Justice Bud and justices of the court. My name is Benjamin Timman. I represent the appellant, West Street LLC. Mansfield's 2014 annual town meeting created a zoning scheme for the cultivation, distribution, or sale of marijuana for medicinal purposes in the town. As part of that, the town created a zoning overlay district at that time in what was called, is called, the Planned Business District, also known as Cabot Business Park, where medicinal marijuana could be cultivated or as relevant to you are sold at a dispensary as part of that bylaw.
Mr. Timman, let me interrupt you and ask you, because this is really a difficult case procedurally, because the law keeps on changing as your case moves along in a parallel fashion. But one of the changes in the law that you're certainly familiar with is something that troubles me with respect to your position on preemption, and that is the line that states, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, which gives the right to conversion. Can you please address that language with respect to preemption?
Yes, Your Honor. So, I think, first of all, when the legislature made those changes in 2017, incident to the 2016 passage of adult use marijuana, they dipped their toe pretty gingerly into the pool of municipal zoning and local control. And so with respect to that language and to language that has wound up in the new medical marijuana regulations and some guidance from the state, there isn't anything there that prohibits a-
So you're saying that a town can have something that's more restrictive under the local ordinances, on its local bylaws than the state, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary? I don't understand that.
It can, Your Honor, in this instance, in that the statute has, and by the statute I mean 94G, which is, the court knows, is entitled marijuana for non-medical use, but actually had some targeted changes with respect to medical. And there, they have a whole section, Section 3, concerning local control, which recognized that towns maintain the ability to zone. And from a preemption standpoint, Your Honor, that's fully consistent with preemption analysis-
But zoning would, of course, be parking and all sorts of things that traditionally local, in whatever district it wants to put into. But the statutes specifically take out the whole business of nonprofit MTCs, right?
There was, right, there was, passed as part of the Acts of 2017. It didn't end up in the Mass General laws, per se, but there was language in Chapter 55, I believe, of the Acts of 2017, in Section 72, that gave, that allowed nonprofit entities to convert, if they wished to do so. But it wasn't mandatory. And the way that has been carried out, both in the regulations, which talk about different types of business entities that medical marijuana sellers, in this case, can form, and then in the actual, sort of, on-the-ground guidance from both the Attorney General and the Secretary of State, which are guidance documents that I cite in the record, it's clear that that's a choice. And the choice that ConCam Inc. made here-
You have that choice, and now, as the law exists, there's no requirement of a corporate identity, correct? Whether it's profit or-
Right. State law no longer requires-
Right.
-that an entity be nonprofit. But as part of zoning, what-
But your zoning law does.
Within the Planned Business District.
I shouldn't say yours, the town's zoning law does.
Right. Right. The town bylaw with respect to medical marijuana dispensaries within this particular Planned Business District, where the locus is and where my client's abutting property is, yes, does still have that requirement. They opted not to change that language at the time, in 2018, when they put in place an adult-use zoning scheme in a different part of town. And under state law, Your Honor, and this is in Section 4 of Chapter 94G, the legislature did make clear, and this has also been carried forward in regulation, that for adult-use dispensaries, they are allowed to become dual-use. So, in other words, there is a different district within Mansfield that's been designated for adult use, but also those dispensaries are free, under state law, to be dual-use. Now, that issue is, in a separate case, companion case, with respect to ConCam and what it can or can't do within the other zoning district that we're talking about here, the PBD. But it's not as if Mansfield has forbidden medical marijuana dispensaries in town, or said across the town that an entity must be a nonprofit. Here, and, you know, we don't, we can't really look into the psyche of why the town meeting didn't later amend the 2014 zoning bylaw covering this district, but here, the law of Mansfield is, by its plain language, that special permits within that district can only be held by nonprofit entities, which the appellee, appellee's principal, I'm sorry, the appellee who, ConCam, its principal is Ellen Rosenfeld, opted to-
You've answered my question. Thank you, Mr. Timman.
Thank you.
You're not challenging the special permit issued to the nonprofit as it existed at the time it was issued, right?
That's correct, Your Honor. We lost at the trial court level on our 40A appeal with respect to, sort of, the garden variety zoning issues. Our challenge is targeted before this court on this one issue. And that one issue could have been easily mooted by the appellee, by simply, you know, converting back to a not-for-profit. They made the decision, contrary to what the zoning bylaws said, to make that conversion. That fact came out in the trial, and it's undisputed that, you know, that the entity did make that conversion and has not converted back.
And what is, so what is the state of the record on review? Do we review it, you know, in real time, or do we review it at the time that the zoning board issued its decision?
Yes, Your Honor. So, it's, on this particular point, Judge, Superior Court Judge was correct that the facts should be reviewed based on what they are now. And specifically, this court's decision in Prudential Insurance Company of America v. Board of Appeals of Westwood, I beg your pardon, it's not, it's, I beg your pardon, it's an appeals court decision, but it cites to this court. So the appeals court decision is 23 Mass App. 278, which cites and quotes from this court's decision in Bicknell Realty Company versus Board of Appeals of Boston, which said that the judge is not confined to hearing only the evidence before the board, but the facts as they exist. And so what the Superior Court Judge said in her ruling on this issue was that she could consider and would consider the fact that the conversion had occurred after the time the special permit was issued. And that same principle would apply, Chief Justice Bud, to this court's review. One other, one other issue that arose in my brother's brief was challenging the validity of the bylaw itself. My only response to that is that there is a statutory provision, as the court is aware, for seeking to invalidate bylaws, Chapter 240, Section 14A, and the appellee has not pursued that particular remedy in this case. So I would state that that particular argument has been waived because the remedy for trying to achieve the invalidation of the bylaw was not pursued. This is a case, Your Honors, that deals with a very narrow issue. It's, I found it ironic that one of the shortest briefs that I've written in a long time was one to this distinguished court, because we did focus on just that one narrow issue. But I think it really does come down to the following points. Number one, that the bylaw language should be interpreted by its plain terms. Number two, that with respect to preemption, the law of preemption, as stated in the Easthampton Savings Bank case, which we cite, as well as the Roma case of this court of 2018, 478 Mass. 580, talks about explicit guidance or explicit language in the state statute in question that makes clear that a locality is not empowered to act. And here, all the municipality has done is to pursue its legitimate zoning functions, to not ban medical marijuana within Mansfield, and to not even ban, as a practical matter, medical dispensaries that are for-profit because of the other zoning that took place in the case.
But as a practical matter, the result will be that, so they, they're going to have, if they want to, they were allowed by state law to convert to a for-profit, right? They have a total right to do that.
For state licensing purposes, yes, Your Honor.
Right. So they've invested in a facility, but they're not going to be able to operate now unless they get a whole new facility and, right? I mean, it's just, it's, so basically, even though it's completely legal, they now can't operate it unless they remain a nonprofit.
Right. They could convert back to nonprofit, Your Honor.
Well, they can't, you can't be both a for-profit and a nonprofit. I guess they could create a separate entity, maybe, but.
Right.
And the legitimacy, from the ZBA perspective of that, is that a for-profit medical marijuana dispensary has got a greater impact on the community than a, I mean, a not-for-profit has less impact than a for-profit, even though state law has now said you can completely convert.
Right. Your Honor, there's nothing in the record that speaks to why the town kept the language as it was. So I can't, I can't stand here and tell you that the town, the planning board in this instance, said, "Well, you know, we think that this language is important because of X, Y, or Z." The language was put in place in 2014, presumably for the same reasons that the state had initially required that medical marijuana facilities be not-for-profit. So that was a judgment by the legislature.
But the state has, the state has made a determination that that's no longer a valid consideration, right?
For purposes of CCC licensing, Your Honor, Bud. But in Section 3 of 94G-
But they didn't, when they, when they made that change, they didn't preserve the right of ZBAs to keep these things in place, did they?
I couldn't hear you, Your Honor.
Sorry, they didn't, and I'm not used to talking through the mask in the microphone, but, so they didn't preserve, they didn't say, "Okay, we're allowing you to convert," but those, they didn't create a grandfather right of municipalities to keep this stuff in place, right?
That's correct, Your Honor, but, but under preemption analysis, they didn't need to affirmatively provide that right to a town. It's about whether they explicitly said to a town, "You may not, in a particular zone, have a nonprofit requirement." And Mansfield has done that, and by the plain language of that bylaw, which I believe should be honored here, this applicant cannot move forward with its special permit.
How big is that zone?
The zone, I believe, is, I was looking at it, it's not in the record, Justice Wenland, but when I was looking at the Cabot Business Park earlier, it was in the-
Well, let me ask you a more precise question. What if the zone was all but one city block?
What if the zone was all-
Yeah. Doesn't that seem to really violate and come into conflict with the state law that says that these nonprofits can convert into for-profits?
If the zone covered most of the city?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
How can we have a preemption analysis? It depends on how big the zone the city decides to define.
I don't think it depends on the size of the zone, Your Honor. I think here, the decisive factor is that there is another zone, that they've created a zone along the Route 140 corridor where there is a dispensary called Relief that's about to open, where this particular restriction that was put in place and not changed does not exist. I don't know if that answers your question, but I don't think that it has to do with the size of the various zones. I would agree with you that if, if the zone that we're talking about here took up, you know, 80% of the, of the town, and there was no other place where a medical marijuana dispensary or adult-use dispensary could go, I agree that would be harmful to my position. But here, and this is in the record, and it was part of the record in the land court case, in the companion case, there has been this other zoning overlay district created.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Attorney Tellerman.
Good morning, Your Honors. May it please the court. My name is Jason Tellerman. I represent Ellen Rosenfeld, the trustee of the Ellen Realty Trust. It's nice to see you again. The issue before you today was not an issue that brought the parties to the Superior Court.
Can you explain the whole issue of subject matter jurisdiction? Because Justice Cohen, or Judge Cohen, kind of stumbles upon this, and then she writes on this issue and decides. What was she supposed to do?
So, the question that I raise in my brief, Your Honor, is the jurisdictional component of considering an issue that would be determinative of the case that wasn't a component of the underlying planning board's decision. Attorney Timman appropriately references that a court, in review of a zoning matter, can certainly review all the facts de novo, but the relevant measuring stick for whether a board made the appropriate decision was, did they make it temporally correct at the time? So we have no quarrel with considering the new facts that weren't evident at the time that the planning board issued their decision. Where I think the judge went awry here is essentially deciding an issue that that decision couldn't have been correct based upon facts, based upon a situation that is future-looking. So there was no declaratory judgment, which could have only happened in the land court anyway, on this. She's essentially had before her a zoning case that would weigh the merits of a decision by the planning board, which, at the time that decision was made, the Realty Trust and ConCam was a nonprofit.
In your opinion, could she have remanded it?
She could have remanded it, and that was, that was even mentioned. Now, we referenced this issue as an aside, just because we felt duty-bound to raise a jurisdictional issue, as we did during the arguments on the issue of preemption below. We don't think that that's the prime mover here. We still think the other three arguments I make are the, are the prime issues here, the preemption.
Did you want us to remand it?
We would prefer dismissing this appeal.
I'm being facetious.
I certainly would not prefer that, Your Honor. We prefer rejecting this appeal for the first three arguments that we raised, one of which is straightforward preemption. And I think it's important, with respect to straightforward preemption, that we consider the purpose of the medical marijuana statutes to begin with. And it's a purpose that's been affirmed in opinions by the Attorney General, and that is that we have a statutory scheme here that is designed to facilitate the dispensing of a medically beneficial drug.
What's the, what's the proper role of the locality in this scheme?
Of a locality?
Yes.
The proper role would be to adopt common-sense zoning that doesn't in any way frustrate the purposes of that statute. I represent a lot of cities and towns, Your Honor. We develop special permit criteria, which is fine, there is a special permit here. We develop any other number of dimensional requirements, review of traffic or drainage, parking, lighting, all those things are fair game. What you can't do is render futile a dictate by the state. Here-
Did you know if a number of bylaws happen to have this nonprofit vestige in their-
I would say a majority of them have this vestige left, Your Honor, because there's been no real reason for them to change since. Now, towns that didn't regulate with a lot of verbiage did not actually have nonprofit. They just defined medical marijuana as defined in the regulations, which make it more fluid, which is really, which is part and parcel of the second argument we raise here, which is that their entire zoning bylaw on this was only nominally related to the nonprofit issues. And it's especially expressly keyed to a regulation that doesn't exist. We're not suggesting, as Attorney Timman said, that you, that the bylaw is illegal. We just say that it was keyed to a regulation that no longer exists and should defer appropriately or be superseded by the existing regulations and statutory scheme which allows nonprofits. So they define it expressly with respect to a regulation. That regulation has been succeeded by a new regulation, which we think covers that gap appropriately. To rule otherwise would be to suggest that the dictate that the Commonwealth made with allowing that fair choice for people to convert to a nonprofit would be futile. And if every town could limit it to nonprofit, then it would essentially result in a de facto prohibition or limiting the scope of the, what the statutory change was designed to do, which was to expand the access and availability of medicinally beneficial marijuana.
Well, I mean, that, that seems like a straw argument to me, in that you say that any restriction that impedes the ability of, or the ability of citizens to get medical marijuana is inconsistent. But what we're really talking about in a preemption argument is whether the local ordinance and the state statute can live in the same universe, correct? It's much more narrow than that.
It is much more narrow, but as we know, it doesn't, even though we feel here that there is an express, there is express language-
Because that's, that's difficult for us to, I would argue or ask you, that's difficult for us to enforce, because any time someone loses in front of a ZBA who wants to put up a dispensary, that argument could come in. So address specifically why it is it's preempted, in that the language is wholly inconsistent, the profit versus nonprofit language.
It's because, and if you look at the Dartmouth case and some of the other cases, there does not have to be. Here, we do think there's express preemption with the notwithstanding language that starts out in the, in the Act, but even if there's not express language, the implied preemption here would apply in the event that the statutory change that was expressly made to advance the ability to, for dispensaries to organize as they see fit, would be rendered futile by this change. There is another zoning district that allows medical, but only is a co-use, and that zoning district is paper-thin and very small. We have located in this particular zoning district and an interest in providing medical and ultimately perhaps converting, but we are eager to start a medical thing. Our effort, medically beneficial marijuana, like other drugs, is controlled by the free market. The free market brings in private entities.
But this is a, this is a narrower question, right? Because the state didn't ban nonprofit dispensaries, right? It just expanded them to be for-profit, right?
It allowed-
So it's not like a classic preemption where the feds have said something's illegal and banned it. We have sort of a permissive expansion of the statute.
Correct.
And you need to argue that the preemption, this expansion, is so important that towns can't stick with the old system, right?
And it is just that important, Your Honor, and for a few reasons. They made this choice, so as Attorney Timman says in his brief and during his remarks, the statute, the new statute, created a choice to expand the scope of medical marijuana dispensaries. That choice would be rendered futile. Now, we reside in a home rule state where 351 cities and towns can design their own zoning bylaws. If each and every single one of those towns saw an opportunity to limit medically beneficial marijuana dispensaries to locate by saying it was nonprofit-only, the entire statutory scheme that they purposely enacted, purposely enacted, it wasn't just kind of casual, it's right in the first few lines of the statute, would be frustrated. And when you frustrate that, you frustrate the purpose of the statute. And the purpose of the statute, again, is to expand the availability of a medically beneficial substance that treats cancer and glaucoma and AIDS and lateral sclerosis and other maladies. They frustrate the ability for dispensaries to compete in that market.
Well, it's a little more complicated, right? I mean, it's really that the, it's, we're making it more profitable to sell marijuana. We're not, no one's preventing anyone from dispensing marijuana. They just, the question is how much your clients make, how much money they make, right? That's really what it's about.
Well-
And by giving them more incentive to make more money, maybe they're going to, you know, build more medical marijuana facilities, right?
And make it more available to the population that want, that needs to obtain that drug. It's also notable, as mentioned in the single amicus brief that was submitted here, that there's really no such thing as a nonprofit medical marijuana facility in Massachusetts, because the way the law works, and in fact, the way the host community agreement here works, is we're never really treated as a nonprofit anyway. Now, I don't know whether or not that factored into the state's analysis, but-
That really can't be true, can it? Because the whole statute only permitted nonprofits for a long time to do the medical marijuana. So there must have been some nonprofit aspect to this.
But they're all paying, essentially, they're all paying property taxes anyway, so they don't get the benefits of the nonprofit treatment anyway. So they're, they're paying their fair share. Federal government doesn't recognize them as a legitimate nonprofit due to the federal prohibition. That's essentially a side issue, and it's not really forming the basis of my argument. The other argument that I think is important to key on here is, with this change, where the state says, "You can organize however you want. You can be a nonprofit, you could be a for-profit. We don't care. Organize however you want." Can that bylaw still, as it exists, govern, or is it now superseded by the state law because local zoning bylaws don't have the ability to govern ownership unless there's a statute that specifically does? For example, the Dover Amendment that requires nonprofit educational organizations if you're going to avail yourself of the educational exemption. We don't suggest that the entire regulatory scheme under the zoning bylaw is defunct. They still require a special permit. We're fine with that. They just cannot apply. They are preempted from applying the component of it that regulates ownership, because the cases suggest that ownership, absent an express statutory scheme, is not fair game for zoning, nor is it included in the zoning act or in the preamble to their own zoning bylaws where they talk about the subjects that they may regulate or not regulate.
Counsel, I'm still struggling a little bit with this argument, because if you, if you take Justice Wenland's point from before, and even in what you concede, there is still an opportunity here for folks to operate in the town of Mansfield that are not-for-profit. And you're saying, or it seems to be saying, that we have to look at what's left in whether or not the statutory purpose has been frustrated or rendered futile. It's not rendered futile. There is another district in which these folks can operate. So, but you said it's small and it's, it's co-in extensive of another use, but there's still another place where this can happen. So how is it, how is it rendered futile by enforcing in this district that you have to be not-for, that the town gets to say, "You have to be not-for-profit"?
So the statute doesn't relate, this particular statute doesn't relate to what district you're in. It says that any licensed entity may convert to not-for-
Sure. But I'm talking about as applied to- Sure. But I'm talking about as applied to what the town decided to do.
So as applied, as applied, our statutory right to convert and other similarly situated medical nonprofit dispensaries that may choose to locate in this district, their right, their statutory right to convert, would be rendered futile by this local zoning bylaw.
In this district, but they could go to the other district where it's permitted.
But the statute does not speak, however, to districting. And again, if you chose a postage-stamp-sized district for it or put up other barriers or otherwise, and as Attorney Timman suggested anecdotally, they already have someone that they, that they are presenting as an adult-use dispensary in another district, there's no guarantee that we would even get a special permit or a host-community agreement that would be necessary. We have the requisite special permit to operate here. We have the necessary license and host-community agreement to operate here. We're eager to dispense medically beneficial marijuana here, but we can't do it. We are frustrated by this local bylaw from doing it in a manner that the state law guarantees.
Okay. Thank you very much, counsel.
Thank you very much, Your Honors.